Welcome. It's 5:37 PM. We apologize we're a few minutes late. We had some technical difficulties, but it seems to be working now. This is the Twilla City Council and Redevelopment Agency of Twilla City. We're meeting in a work meeting on Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. The meeting is being held at Twilla City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Twilla, Utah. It is also being streamed electronically on the Twilla City YouTube channel. We will start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. We'll move on to item three, which is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, for my mayor's report, I want to pay our respects to Mr. Roe Harrison, who passed away last week. And in 2023, he was the grand marshal of our parade, and at the time, the staff put together some great information about Roe, and I think it's very fitting that we read this again tonight, so I'm going to read this to you. Roe Harrison moved to Twilla in 1961, where he began his teaching career on a one-year contract with the Twilla County School District, teaching 4th grade at Central Elementary. He found his passion teaching art and working in library arts with children. After five years at Central Elementary, Roe transferred to East Elementary and spent 15 years teaching elementary students to love art, music, and reading. While at East Elementary, Roe taught students how to play the ukulele, and they had a ukulele club with as many as 80 students who would travel and perform at malls and the Utah Stars games. During his time in the elementary school system, Roe worked as a librarian, a PE teacher, a music teacher, and as the audiovisual director while at the same time earning his master's degree. Roe was also tasked with overseeing the library science program in every school in the school district, which somehow led him to teaching art classes in every school in the district, including Iba Pah, Vernon, Dougway, Grantsville, and Wendover. In most of those schools, he was teaching students from kindergarten to grade 12. It was not long after when he found his true interest as an art and photography teacher at Twilla High School in 1983. While at Twilla High School, Roe started out working as a librarian but ended up becoming the full-time art and photography teacher. He also directed the yearbook staff and produced many years of Twilla High School yearbooks. Roe accompanied many students on school trips to Europe, where he helped teach students to love art and history. Soon after retiring in 2003, Roe was persuaded to come back to Twilla High School and continue teaching. During his time with the Twilla County School District, he taught in almost every school, including South High, which was the alternative high school, Blue Peak High School, and also taught concurrent enrollment classes. He taught music and art to thousands of students in our city and our county. After 52 years on a one-year contract with Twilla County School District, Roe retired as a teacher, but he remained the voice at Twilla High School football and basketball games, where he enjoyed announcing and supporting high school events for over 30 years. For his continued support of high school students and athletics, Roe was nominated by Twilla High School and was presented with the Utah High School Activities Association Super Fan of the Year Award in 2023. Roe was a dedicated citizen to the community. He served as one of the original members of the Twilla City Arts Council. Through this time with the Arts Council, he enjoyed sharing and teaching art to teens and adults. Roe worked with many and taught many art mediums, including photography, oil, pen and ink, acrylics, Prism color, and Crayola. Roe never turned away anyone when asked if he could paint or share his talents with the community. He painted many high school gym floors and high school walls with his art. His artwork is on every high school basketball gym floor in the Twilla Valley, including the buffalo that is currently featured on the Twilla High School gymnasium floor. Over the years, Roe designed many homecoming floats and painted many football fields for homecoming games. He earned many awards that were won while sharing his art at the Twilla County Fair booth at the Utah State Fair for many years, where he created original works of art, including Twilla County. Roe also designed the art and painted one of the first buffalo, which is displayed in Twilla City's downtown area right in front of the Pioneer Museum. Roe's love of art included music. In college, Roe played the trombone in a dance band called the Straightliners, the Starliners, Starliners for four years. He loved to play guitar with the band The Big Belly Boys, and for many years, they played for the residents at several of the assisted living centers in Twilla City every Thursday afternoon. Roe was a dedicated member of the Twilla City Fire Department, where he served as chief from 2000 to 2001, and had over 40 years of active service to the citizens of Twilla City. Roe spent eight years representing the Twilla City Fire Department while serving as the Secretary of the Utah State Firefighters Association. Roe often created original pieces of art for fire department banquets around the state of Utah, including the pencil drawing of Station Number One that commemorated 100 years of Twilla City's volunteer fire department in 2019. Roe and his beautiful wife Dixie raised three children and are grandparents to their six grandchildren and a great-grandchild that is due in May. They are proud to call Twilla City home forever and forever in Twilla. In 2023, Roe was honored as the Fourth of July Parade Grand Marshal. The theme that year was "America the Beautiful." We couldn't think of a better person in our community who beautified our city more than Roe did through artistic skills, music, words, and deeds. Thank you, Roe, for over 60 years of service to our community and for making our part of America beautiful. Can you just hear him as he's up on top of that fire truck? He was so thrilled that day. It was really a lot of fun to have him in the parade. We just want to extend our sympathies to Dixie and her family and ask our Heavenly Father to bless them and watch over them.
Thanks, Marywin. We'll move on to our next item, which is the council members' report. We'll start with Councilwoman Manzio.
I don't want to follow that. He was my high school teacher, so lots of fun times in high school. I wanted to just make sure everybody knew that right now the Ritz Theater is going under some minor renovations, taking off some of the asbestos and the popcorn ceiling, that kind of stuff, so it is closed until early March. But it will be awesome when it's done. And then the next big project will probably close longer because we'll be removing the ceiling in the theater, which is a big, and replacing the theater ceiling. So that's a big project, but that's all I have to report today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goachis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank the mayor for that beautiful tribute and for the opportunity that it was to work with Roe with the Arts Council and painting classes and all the things that he has done. For my council report, I'd like to report that I've attended the weekly Legislative Policy Committee meetings. The legislature is now halfway through their session, general session, and they meet weekly with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. I'm able to participate and represent Twilla at that meeting. I also attended the Rad Pack Open House. That's resisting alcohol and drugs by the local youth with the Twilla County Health Department, and that coalition advocates for healthy living, and I just want to applaud those kids that are attending and teaching their peers about substance abuse prevention. I also attended a meeting of the Children's Justice Center and applaud the work that they're doing. I attended a tour of the new Deseret Peak High School, and it's exciting to see the product that has been in the works since 2018, and it's almost done, eight weeks until finish. I attended a Twilla County Chamber luncheon today that was presented by GOEO, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, and know that our economic development coordinator, John Perez, is available to help businesses, and he is a great resource, and a lot of people came up and wanted to talk with him after that meeting. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hanson?
I've been gone a lot the last couple of weeks with work in the Hunting Expo, but that was fun to be at the Hunting Expo. I did the planning commission last week, and they, as always, did a great job in discussing this, some of the things we're talking about tonight. And then, of course, you know, if your life was, if you didn't live in Twilla very long, your life hasn't been affected by Roe, but I've lived here my whole life, and as long as I can remember, Roe was being part of the school and part of people's lives and affecting all of us and being a friend about everybody he was around. So anyway, he'll be missed for sure. That's my report, Dave. You're up.
Yeah, I commend the mayor on that about Roe. He really was a good guy, and my heart goes out to the kids. Well, they're adults now, so they're not kids, but, and Dixie, Roe will be dearly missed. I did attend the Arts Council meeting last week, and that's about it.
Thank you. I attend the weekly staff meeting. I'm always impressed with the mayor and her administration and the work they do in Twilla. I also attended the Deseret Peak High School walk-through, and what we called it, but it's a pretty amazing building. It'll be great for that area in Twilla, and I'm excited to see that open. And then I just echo everything that everyone has said about Roe. I think he'll always be the voice of Twilla, so I'll miss that part of hearing him at games and announcing things. So we'll move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a discussion on proposed amendments to Twilla City Code 7-14-9, Keeping of Farm Animals and Pets Regarding Materials and Standards for Corrals, Pens, and Fences, presented by Andrew Agar, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate you giving some of your time for me to explain this to you and what we're proposing here. As mentioned, we are looking at amending some of the language in Twilla City Code 7-14-9 regarding the keeping of farm animals and pets, especially about materials and standards for corrals, pens, and fences. I'd like to give you a little bit of a history into why this is for you and what we're looking at and why we're looking at this. Currently, there are quite a few zones in Twilla City that do permit the keeping of farm animals without restriction. The RR1, RR5, RR20, and the MR160, that's actually the MU160, I apologize. You can have farm animals in those zones without restriction. Of course, they can't cause a nuisance, they can't cause any problems, and they need to meet the standards for coops and stables and so forth, as defined by the ordinance, but there is no restriction for animals in those zones. The R130 zone permits farm animals, but there is a restriction of one animal unit per 10,000 square feet of lot size. So if you have half an acre, you get two animals, so on and so forth. And then all R1 and MR residential zones prohibit the keeping of farm animals. However, in these zones, you can have, in the R1 zones, you can have up to six chickens, rabbits, or ducks, or a combination of those, not to exceed six, and roosters are not permitted in those zones. So this is a map that I've thrown up here showing the city's infill areas. Area B is outlined in red, and Area A is highlighted in red shading. The reason I wanted to show this graphic is many properties within this infill area are older properties, and many of them are very long and very deep, and they have a lot of excess property. Historically, these properties have had animals, and many of them still do. And at times, will create a bit of a problem for city code enforcement, because most of the properties in these areas are zoned R17. As I mentioned, R17 zoning does not permit the keeping of farm animals. When we receive a complaint regarding farm animals, whether it be odors, or flies, or dust, or noise, the code enforcement officer has to go out and investigate the situation. And what we encounter regularly is when he approaches the potential violator of the ordinance, they claim that their animals have been there historically, and they're quote-unquote grandfathered. I don't like that term. I call them legally non-conforming uses. It then puts us in a really difficult situation, because how do we prove that they have not had animals on the property? And it kind of puts the city in a he-said, she-said situation. And the problem arises, not so much because of this code, but we have Twilla City Code 7-3, which permits non-conforming land uses to continue on in perpetuity without a cessation of use. They can't enlarge the use, they can't relocate it, but they may continue it in perpetuity as long as there's not a cessation of use. And so, as I mentioned, it puts the city in a difficult situation, because we can't really enforce this situation. It's hard to prove. I've been working in cities that have these issues for 23 years, and rarely have I ever seen it resolved. So in approaching the council on this, I would like to take a different approach for enforcement. There are standards that can be enforced and possibly reduce some of the problems and impacts that animals may bring, especially in these R17 zones. We do have standards for the location of barns, coops, pens, stables, runs, and corrals, and those can be enforced by the code enforcement officer if there's a problem. There are specific standards, and they're easy to identify. We don't need to try and drum up proof or evidence from years past to enforce the ordinance. And so, that leads me to what we're proposing here with the current amendment. Twilla City Code does not include clear standards regarding the type of fencing that can be used for corrals, pens, or other structures used for the keeping of farm animals. And I would like to see a little more of a concise standard that could be easily enforced when a complaint arises. It has also come to the city staff's attention that some property owners use temporary materials for corral and pen fencing, such as pallets and plywood, hay bales, and empty oil barrels, which are not attached to the ground and sometimes aren't very successful at maintaining the animals. We also have issues with these materials resting on adjacent fences and encroaching upon neighbors' property lines because they're unsecured. So the amendments that we're proposing are fairly simple. It is the addition of three paragraphs of language to Twilla City Code 7-4-9, the first of which reads, "All pens, corrals, and fences used for confinement and keeping of animals shall be constructed of fencing materials, such as wire, vinyl, wrought iron, wood rails, and so forth. It shall exclude materials such as plywood sheets and pallets." And here's a graphic of some materials that are utilized for animal fencing. There's wire secured by a fence post, vinyl rail, wood rail, wrought iron, and aluminum, movable panels. So those are the types of materials that the ordinance would be in favor of and permissible to. The next paragraph is, "All pens, corrals, and fences shall not lean against or encroach upon an adjacent property line or fence, and shall be contained entirely upon the owner's property." So we want to make sure that they're going to store animals there. They don't impact the adjacent property owner, and that they use the appropriate materials to do so. And then Paragraph 5, "All pens, corrals, and fences shall be firmly attached to the ground and supported by means of posts, stakes, or other structurally sound methods." And then here's a graphic showing some of the things that can be used. Wooden fence posts, metal fence posts, the little graphic down on the bottom there has a sandbag holding the fence in place. There's some rebar that's holding a fence in the middle there. So there are many ways that you can stake a fence down. That's pretty much what we're looking to do. This is kind of what we want to avoid, is this type of situation, and avoid any encroachments on the adjacent property. And I think that these amendments would provide a more substantial ability of the code enforcement officer to react if a complaint is registered. So that's what we're proposing. I would like to have the council's blessing to move this through the public process, and I'm happy to entertain any suggestions or questions you might have. Turn the time over to you.
And are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a few.
Go ahead.
Murray's looking at me, because I've lived in this area for, and had animals for 40 years about now, and there's always going to be complaints about something in that area, and then the code enforcement guy's always got to deal with it. You know, because I've dealt with people complaining about, especially this time of year, it comes up that the manor's in the corrals and you can't clean it yet, or the kind of animals that you have, or whatever it happens to be. And so, this particular thing we're doing, I'm not totally against that, but it's not going to solve all the problems that he's having. It's not going to change much for him, not really. I don't know what this has to do with his enforcement, because unless people are just complaining about the fencing material that goes up, maybe it'll handle that. But the other things he has to deal with, that I get contacted by pretty much every year from the code enforcement, has nothing to do with fencing. So I don't see that changing that, you know, because that's how you kind of started it out, your presentation, that affects him, but I don't know how we're solving anything for him.
Yeah, I don't know if this ordinance would resolve that problem. It just gives us a little more teeth in the enforcement issue if these fencing issues come to our attention.
For the fencing, that's one of the complaints, I'm sure. You see, because people don't like to see unsightly things. If you have animals, at certain times, you're going to have unsightly things. That's just, especially unless you got them, hit them in your yard. I happen to be on, you know, three frontages on my property, so it's always in public view. But I just, you know, and all these, the other thing is, you know, that we've never had a way of keeping track of who's had animals and who hasn't, and keeping track of that. That's like a full-time job for a new employee.
It is, and that's one of the difficulties we've had in trying to
I don't see how you ever enforce that. Not really, I mean. That's a tough one. So, and you're right. I mean, you just said that too. I mean, so, but I just know that this is, this is going to just affect the way the property looks and the fencing, but not have anything to do with helping the code enforcement, at least not much.
It's not going to do much in regards to removal of animals in a non-conforming situation.
Right.
It just really won't.
Right.
And I don't have an answer for that. I don't know
I don't think there is. I don't think there is one, really, because I get the complaints every year. Sometimes it's my water's dirty for my horses, you know, or something, you know?
Yeah.
And that's, that's just something we're always going to have to deal with until we all die off and it turns into condominiums or something. Yeah.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Anyway, and the other side of this, I'm not, I don't know that I'm against having a pallet with a sheet of plywood on it that's painted, and that looks nice.
Well, that's an interesting consideration. Pallets are made out of wood.
Yeah.
And you could technically use a pallet to make a nice fence.
You could, and then if you cover it up. So I'm not sure that that's the answer either, that we can't use pallets or plywood to make a nice fence. I mean, I have two-by-sixes that are wood for my fence, kind of like what you showed, but the fence doesn't look much different than if all them pallets were hooked together nice, all going the same direction and painted. It almost looks like the same thing, because I got six rails on it. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure where we're going with this, and if it's going to, if it's the right thing to do. You know, or maybe it just can't be unsightly. I don't know. Maybe that's part of the ordinance.
But would some of that be solved, like if you had a pallet fence like this, and it was staked down, then it would be more of a permanent fence versus just a pallet stacked on somebody else's fence or something?
Well, yeah, and I agree with that part of it, you know. You know, sometimes I throw up a temporary corral and do some way to keep it up for a minute, because we have to move the stock animals temporarily for a minute while we clean the corrals or whatever, for a few days. But that wouldn't be a permanent, but I, yeah, I don't see just leaning pallets and bailing wiring them together or something, making a, I think they should be
Permanent.
Made more permanent.
Maybe we look at, not getting into the material of the fence so much, but just require some kind of a securing system to keep it in place.
Yeah, and then like a look, I don't know, and then this becomes a debate on what looks good and what looks bad, I guess.
Yeah, that's a little subjective there.
The unsightly thing, you know, is hard, hard to do, but that, I don't know. I don't know. I have lots of thoughts about it, but no answers. So anyway, you got my two cents.
Mr. Chair, can I comment? I'd like to thank Mr. Agar for working on this, and I've been working with him a little bit, and he has lended his expertise to, you know, the problems that we have, that we see of keeping farm animals, especially in the grandfathered areas, and then also, you know, people's complaints. And one of the concerns that I had that I brought up to him was just the ability that a neighbor has to just lean a pallet against somebody else's fence, and allowing their animals to, you know, break through, and, you know, that causes damage to other people's fence. So I do find that restricting some types of materials would be good, and also ensuring that the property owner has a secure fence that keeps their animals contained, and that it's not the responsibility of the property owner to have a fence to keep animals out of their yard. The responsibility lies on the animal owner. And so that's what I want to see. And I don't really care about the unsightly part of it, just other than trying to be a good neighbor and securing animals on their property. Thank you.
I do agree with that completely. Yeah, you shouldn't be using your neighbor's fence even to secure animals, because I see that where they're using the neighbor's fence and it's reciting it, and that's not right either. So.
I grew up in the same situation, so I, our house was on the very north end of town, and as people built around it, every, I don't know, every three to six months, all the neighbors started to call and complain about the smell or the flies or whatever. And I don't think this fixes that. I think you're right, Ed, and that that's going to be a problem as long as people have animals, and they have the right to have animals. But I do agree that people should have to keep their animals fenced in their own yard and not use other people's property or fences to create that. So I'm in favor of the change. I do, you know, we can talk about how good something looks all day, and we can all disagree on that, but I like the idea of the permanence, at least semi-permanent, because like you said, you do have to move animals and maybe have a semi-temporary fence, but things should be staked down, so it's keeping your animals in your property, like Melody said, and not somebody else having to keep them out. I agree with that part.
So would it be beneficial to remove the wording that excludes certain materials, like the plywood and the pallets? Because I agree with you that a pallet fence, I think, could look just like a wood fence, just built a little different.
Yeah. You can make them not look like pallets, just by putting them up, all lined up and paint them all. You'd never know they was pallets, probably.
And it could be ambiguous in the future if this code were to be adopted. Somebody puts up a pallet fence, say, hey, code allows wood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think you say pallets.
Yeah. I think it's important, though, that we let, that code enforcement, that there's not that gray area. There's got to be a little bit of black and white and give them some guidance, because that's not fair to them either, to have to go try to address the situation, but then it's, there's nothing in code, and it puts them in really bad situations as well. So, does anyone else have any other discussion, or we can move it through the process and make changes later if we need to, but.
Yeah, somewhere during the process, I agree with that, but I hope somewhere down through the process, it'll be brought up. If not, I'll bring it up myself. I know you don't, I could hear myself. I thought I was talking loud enough, anyway. But I don't want to be a stickler to dictate how someone manages their property, you know what I mean? But at the same time, and I agree with what you guys are saying on 99% of it, but being neighborly, I guess, would be where I'm going with this, is if someone takes the time to get out and mow their lawn and keep their lawn and their home looking nice, and then someone with, not just with animals, but with anything, and they just have a makeshift fence up, and they're, you know, on your, not on your property, it's on their property, but nevertheless, it's, if you take pride in your home and you try to make it look as nice as you can, you really don't want to go outside to have a cup of coffee and see a broken-down fence, you know what I mean? And I'm guilty of that, because thanks to the tree and some other stuff, I got a broken-down fence in my backyard I got to fix. But I'm going to fix it, and we all know that there's, sometimes there's individuals that won't fix it. And I kind of sort of think, maybe not this one, but maybe another one somewhere down the line, we can address that, not just because of animals, because you got people that don't have animals that have broken-down fences in their yard. Like I said, mine broke, and I don't have animals. I mean, I clean up animal mess, but I don't have any, because people that have them for a while, unfortunately. But I But I'm just throwing that out there, because somewhere down the line, we should be not necessarily concerned, well, should be concerned, but not direct people to make sure their homes look, their yards and fence and stuff look nice. We can't, I don't think we can legally do that, but it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay. Well, I'll move it through the process, and we'll see where it ends up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Move on to our next discussion item, a discussion on the provision of water rights for the proposed Desert Rose business loss. Mixed-use development proposed to be located at approximately 105 East, 1,000 North. This is presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Got another fun one for you. Need your help on this one. You're familiar with the project. This is the property. It's five acres, located north of Macy's and directly east of Zaxby's Chicken. A few months ago, the Planning Commission, or the City Council, upon recommendation from the Planning Commission, voted to approve a land use map amendment to mixed use. They have submitted a zoning map amendment, and it went to Planning Commission. Planning Commission tabled the item pending submittal of a development agreement. They wanted to see what they could come up with through the development agreement. Roger and I took some time to review the development agreement, sent comments back to them, but they have indicated that they're at a point now where they need, they need water, and they need to find out the city's position on this. And just to refresh you, the proposal that they've given us, the concept plan, proposes thirty-five townhouse-style units that have commercial on the ground floor with residential on the upper floor, a truly mixed-use development. And they need the zoning map amendment to accomplish this. You are familiar with your water policy for commercial development. You do provide a payment-in-lieu option if they, if the proposal generates jobs, good tax responses, property taxes, and so forth. Mr. Perez brings these to you quite often for your, for your consideration. Residential's a little different. The city, the City Council does permit a payment in lieu of water rights dedicated, water rights dedication for existing vacant residential lots to have one home constructed thereon, or if a lot with a home subdivides and produces an additional lot, they can do a payment in lieu of, for that situation. Any development with two or with more than two lots, they have to go out and find their own water and then dedicate that to the city. As you are aware, that is considerably cumbersome and difficult right now for developers to find water. So, therein lies the quandary we have with this particular development. It kind of falls in a gray area between your policy. The policy is clear if you're commercial, the policy is clear if you're residential, but it's not very clear if you're a mix of both. And this is where I need your help, or Paul needs your help. We need to try and figure this out so we can give them some direction. One of the things that we look at with, when considering a mixed-use development, is the use of the property first and foremost, commercial with an ancillary residential use, or is it first and foremost residential with an ancillary commercial use? In this case, I believe the first and foremost purpose of this project would be commercial with ancillary residential uses. If it was the opposite, it'd be no different than a home with a home occupation, which we already permit, and we would need to go through this whole process to authorize that. So, the first and foremost use of the property would definitely be residential, or excuse me, commercial, with those ancillary residential uses. The other thing to consider is if water were authorized for the commercial element, would a residential use above produce any increased draw or water demand? The problem we have with this one is we don't necessarily know what commercial uses are going to be on the ground floor until they build it and bring in their business licenses for review. So, it kind of puts us in a difficult situation here, because we can't really predict water usage. We don't know what the commercial activity is going to be. And then one of the questions, Mr. Councilman McCall raised this the other day after a Planning Commission meeting, and he said if we authorize water purchase for mixed-use developments, does the council create a difficult precedent? We have the mixed-use general zone, which does permit technically mixed-use development. This project's a little different, because we are working on a development agreement, which is specific to that property and is not specific to other properties. However, that is definitely a consideration, what kind of a precedent does that create? Just staff's opinion on this matter. The council does have the authority and the right to say no. So, you don't necessarily have to say yes when these requests come to you. So, yes, there could be a precedent created there, but the choice ultimately is the council's, and you can make that decision. The applicant is prepared to move forward with the development agreement, but without water, the project really cannot progress. And so, we're at this point that they don't really want to progress forward with the development agreement until they have a chance. So, staff is not asking the council to make a decision whether they're going to provide water for them. They still have to go through the process that the Economic Development Director usually will bring to you. I guess we're just wanting to have some clarification on this policy. What do we do when we get these mixed-use developments? How do we handle the water? And I'm willing to take anything you're willing to offer me, so.
So, this specific developer would need enough water for the residential and the commercial, though. It's not sufficient just to give them commercial, right? Is that?
Well, that's, that's the, that's one of the quandaries we have. If they have enough water for a commercial activity, will the residential use generate additional? Because supposedly, based upon what the applicant's proposing, the operator of the business is also going to be living in that unit. So, when they're not in the residential unit, they're going to be down in the commercial unit. And so, I don't know for sure.
I think we've talked about the challenge with that is businesses fail. People, you know, they, my wife, she used to cut hair. She doesn't cut hair anymore. She's moved on from that. So, what if we lived here, and now we don't have that salon in the basement or the business, but I'm not going to move up just because my business isn't, it failed or it's not in operation anymore? So, then we have residential, and we don't have a commercial aspect anymore, at least the way I'm looking at it. It becomes purely a residential unit. That's my biggest worry about this, is if that starts to happen and you, next thing you know, fifty percent of them are purely residential, then the whole purpose of giving them water was to try to promote economic development and create jobs and things like that. And then we failed on that purpose, I think. So, I have a lot of reservations about this, and I think it does set a precedent that is not in the benefit of Tuilisi. So, my opinion, love to hear everyone else's, but I have a lot of concerns about it.
Roger, do you recall when we were reviewing that development agreement, if they had any language in there about what happens if somebody moves out of the, or if the commercial venture fails? I can't, I don't have any recollection as to whether or not they addressed that in the proposed agreement.
I don't think they did. We asked them about it, and they didn't know how to guarantee that the business owner and the resident would be the same people.
Yeah. Yep.
And I guess they would still have the opportunity to rent out that area, but it's still.
If they could keep it commercial.
If it's always commercial, yeah.
Yeah, and I think in the discussion in Planning Commission when we had it, they talked a lot about that and how, the same thing as the animals, who's enforcing that and making that happen?
Yeah.
I think you talked about that, too, that, I don't have time to enforce it, so who's going to do that if we let it happen and then they don't have a business in the bottom, but they move their family and the rest of the house?
Any enforcement would have to be private through a homeowners' association.
So, you could do something like that, like an HOA or something?
The city would not be enforcing that.
Yeah.
There is a hybrid approach of allowing the fee-in-lieu for only the commercial portions and requiring them to bring the water rights for any additional residential component. I don't, I don't think that gets them anywhere, because they don't have any water, but just to throw that idea into the mix.
And I thought of that when you was talking about it, that tell them to bring half the water, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know where they get it, but there's, there might be some somewhere.
And that, that could be the way to go.
But like you said, their business model is that the same person is going to be living upstairs, that's owning the business downstairs, at least to start. So, how do you do that when, are you generating more water up here? I mean, maybe a shower, but I assume these are businesses like salons and small businesses like that.
Art studios.
Yeah, art studio, maybe a legal office, yeah, something like that. So, you're, it's the same, it's the same. Like, how do you differentiate that? That's, I have a lot of hesitation myself, because I don't, I have a hard time differentiating. Although this is what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, all of your bathing and cooking activities would be the residential use. So, and that, that's why we require point-two-five acre feet is for those uses.
And I don't see, most businesses that could even go there would use much water.
Yeah.
A bathroom, other than maybe a salon, a little bit more, but still, it wouldn't be tons.
Yeah.
I really do like the idea, the concept in itself, but water's always a problem in the Tuila Valley, and I don't anticipate that changing. And I do have a worry that other developers, they talk, right, they'll know that this happened and that there's a way to try to get a commercial and residential aspect. Because what difference would it be if all the commercial's in the center and then you have your residential outside, but you have the, the same idea, right? They're just walking across this small street, and that's what we do in other areas, but is it different because it's stacked on each other? I, I just, I have a lot of questions about it.
And I think, honestly, that with that, if a business did potentially fold, fold, one, I don't think even the HOA could kick them out, because they own that property. They could find them. And the way things are today, there's a lot of people that are moving back home, and if you have that space and you, your business failed, more than likely, someone's going to move in downstairs, and it'd be a complete, now you got a rental property downstairs, or something to the effect. The young lady that was representing them the last time we spoke about, I'm all about bringing something to the table, you know what I mean? And there was discussion about a potential road that would go down behind that property, all the way down to, I think it's 112? Not 112, it's 2100.
118.
118, yeah. All the way down there, but those parcels of land are owned by, by different people. And I thought maybe she was going to contact them to see if there was a way they could work a deal out with that. Because, I mean, I would be in favor if they donated, dedicated that land enough, what is it, 120 feet for a road, or?
66, 84, depends on the class of the road.
Yeah, I was thinking a wide one. I'm sorry. No, but if they did that, that would be beneficial for the city. You know what I'm saying? Because it would alleviate traffic, not being on Main Street at that particular area. So, to something like that, and I thought she was going to look into that.
And she hasn't mentioned anything to me about that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
In these mixed-use developments, you know, their intent is to have commercial down below and residential up above, but that doesn't always happen, and there's no requirement that somebody have a business downstairs. So, we could have these units that are just sold as residential properties. And so, you know, I agree that there, there needs to be a differentiation between residential and commercial, but we have no guarantee. And so, I don't know how we can make a decision if it, if there's not more clear information about what the business is, and then you're going to deal with individual owners and not just this property owner. We're going to be dealing with the individual owners of the units. And so, I'm not favorable even in, even in bringing a hybrid fee, because there's no guarantee that there's going to be a commercial benefit to Tuilisi. And I know that that's the intent, but there's no guarantee of that.
In the development agreement, do they mention whether these are for sell units or for rent units?
I think she said it for sale. Didn't she say?
I don't think they did. My understanding is that these would be owned individually, based on conversation with the applicant, but I don't think the development agreement has any language about that. Roger, do you recall anything there?
I don't. I do recall some discussion of the fact that the commercial building code would apply to the bottom, the commercial portion of the building, and, and so, under building code, they would not be allowed for residence. But I don't know how that would play out.
Yeah. It's an interesting proposal. It really is.
I still like it.
Me, too.
The overall thing, I still like having the business, there's places that have that, and it works, you know? It's just how to make it work. And I'm, and I'm for giving some of them some water, like for the commercial part of it. It's just, we're all worried about the control of it, making sure it's going to be commercial and all that, and I, I get that for sure. That's one of my concerns.
I assume everywhere, because she said they had done these in other cities, so I assume they're all cities where there's just water.
Yeah. American Fork was one of them, and they've got.
Bergen City.
Bergen City? Yep. Those are the two cities that I know she's mentioned. Yeah, they've got more water availability, definitely.
I also like the concept, but I, I have a lot of hesitation.
Okay.
I do, too. And if, if they had water to bring to the table, that makes it much easier for the, for the council to make this decision. I know personally people that live in Santaquin in this type of a development, and they don't have a business in their home, but that's how their property was designed. So, I think nine times out of ten, this is going to be a residence. And then, if they choose to put a business in the bottom, then that's going to be, you know, a possibility. But more than likely, this is a residential unit that maybe has a business component.
Where's another mixed use in Tuila? I know Main Street, Broadway.
Main Street has a couple of buildings where there's some commercial on the ground floor, and then some residential apartments above, but they are not associated with each other.
Okay.
They're completely separate, ownership and management and everything.
This would really be the first of its kind, then, in Tuila.
This is a unique request for our city.
I just think of the property to the east of it. She wanted townhomes. If she requested something like this, why would it be any different, right? So, how do you, how do I go say to her, nope, that's not the best spot, even though it's a quarter mile away from it? It's still surrounded in the same area. I get that we'd have to rezone things and talk about that more, but there's other areas in town where I think this would start to come up more often, and maybe that's good, but water-wise, that's not an easy thing to decide, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if that gives you.
No, that's very helpful. I have a really good idea where the council's position is on this, and I appreciate your advice, and I'll let them know what feedback I received and let them decide how they want to proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our discussion items, so we'll move on to Item Six, which is a closed meeting. We're still okay for the closed meeting tonight, right? Okay, perfect. So, we would like to move to a closed meeting to discuss litigation and/or property acquisition. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move to the closed meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauchis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. It's 6:26 PM, and we'll reconvene in the large conference room for the closed meeting.